April 7th, 2020. Before we get started, I'd like to make the following statement. This is Wilson Central School District's second attempt at live streaming and our first attempt at a teleconference that's livestreamed. As a reminder, if we lose connectivity, we're going to keep going with the meeting. And at the end of the meeting, it'll be put up on the district website for you to be able to view. If we have any technical difficulties during this meeting, we may stop for a moment, get them fixed, and then move forward. We have a couple of people that are not board members that are part of this meeting that you may recognize or not recognize, but I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge this. We have Jordan Seefeld, our district clerk, our business official, Honey Simpson, our technology facilitator, and then from Erie One Bocey's, our host, William Valente, and Bill May interject at any time. He's watching the live feed that you're seeing. If there's any issues, he's going to interject and make sure that we can correct them. So a couple of statements. Any and all items that are projected or shared during this board meeting this evening will be placed on the district page, including tonight's presentation. Any and all documents that the board members are using, including the agenda, are and will be posted on the district webpage. For public forum tonight, we're going to use the same process as last time. If you have input, comments, you have questions, I'm going to ask that you call the district number 751-9399 either at the end of this meeting, please. We will answer that message by calling you back. So please leave your name and your phone number. We'll call you back after the meeting and throughout the rest of this week. At this time, I am going to turn it over to President Waters. I'm going to do a roll call of the members that are present today.
Board members, thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance that after which time we'll do a roll call. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Vice President Chipola. Board members, roll call. For those present this evening, please answer by here or yes. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Here.
Vice President Chipola.
Here.
Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Thank you. Under 1B approval, it's dated March 10, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Chipola so moved.
Trustee Boobar, second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. I will ask for those in favor. Trustee Boobar.
Yes.
Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart. Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all are in favor, none are opposed. Under 1C approval, it's dated March 24, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Carlin, so moved.
Trustee Hurley, second.
Thank you. Roll call, board members. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola. Trustee Hurley.
Yes.
Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart. Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all are in favor, none opposed. Under D, accept the treasurer's report for February 2020 and the amount of $3,005,037. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Crop will make the motion.
Trustee Stewart, second.
Thank you. Roll call, board members. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola. Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all are in favor, none are opposed. As you're well aware, with the significant developments both locally in our state and nationally, our budget calendar has been altered a bit. And with that, so have the finances and the projections of our foundation in building aid and all the other categories that we're going to get. I've asked Mrs. Oliveri to give us an updated budget proposal, which is significantly different than the last one that she gave us, just to give us a little bit of feel from where we are at today. It looks like all of our calendar is going to move 30 to 45 days ahead from where it was. So we are not approving the budget as we intended this evening. And with that, Mrs. Oliveri, if you could give us an update on the budget.
Thank you, President Waters. Good evening, everyone. Board members, it's been quite a change since two weeks ago when we talked. So I want to give you an update. And for all those who are watching, I hope that you will understand what we're going through. And if you do not, because you did not see last week's or the previous month's, please reach out to me or call that number that Superintendent Carter gave you, and we can certainly get you up to speed. Right now, what I'm going to do is share my screen. Board members, you were given this information on Friday from Superintendent Carter, but for the public, so you'll be able to see my PowerPoint as we go along. So the big change, board members, is on the revenue side. We always talk revenue and expenditures. So the state budget was passed on Friday, April 3rd, and we did get the state aid runs. And there are some changes compared to what I presented on March 24th. So let's take a look at this. On the first page, I always give you a big picture kind of view, and then we go into the details. So the big picture revenue total has decreased from our previous meeting. Expenditures are currently about the same. I did tweak them slightly, so they are a little bit lower. But as you can see, we have the $305,333 shortfall. On March 24th, I presented to you almost a balanced budget. At that time, we are only a shortfall of $18,000. So I'm going to go over in detail in a minute where that $300,000 came from. Board members, this is review for you, but for the public, the revenue assumptions I'm using are 2.67 as our tax levy. That is our legal limit. And during budget season, we have been discussing putting out our legal limit. And we also have some adjustments to the building aid and the transportation aid that I'm going to go over in a minute. I still have the $400,000 of debt service reserve being put into the budget for next year and our $500,000 appropriated fund balance that we have been able to carry over the last few years. So that is $900,000 from our savings account. So that's important for everyone to know that we are in need of using our savings going into next year more than we usually are. We are still at a shortfall of about $300,000. Expenditure total change is only 1.52. So you can tell that we have really been working to tighten up those expenditures as much as we can. Principal and interest payments are $1.2 million. Healthcare insurance costs are set at a 5% increase for next year. And this year, we have no teacher retirements in the budget. So let's look at that revenue compared to last meeting. You can see the change there. The state aid is the only figure that I have changed since the last time we met. So currently, you can see that number coming in at a negative $345,000. So let's look into the detail of why that change. You received this in your packets on Friday. Unfortunately for the public, it is kind of hard to compare apples to apples here. A lot of things that happen with state financing are complicated, so please bear with me as I try to explain to you how to compare these numbers, apples to apples. So when the governor came out in January with his executive budget, he wanted to lump together 10 different aid categories. And he came out with this figure. You'll see, I hope you're seeing me point. I'm not sure if you are. But the $11,7943 was our foundation aid number with the 10 other categories lumped together. Only three of those categories affect us. So to compare the same numbers in the state budget released last week, you have to add together the foundation aid, the Bocey's aid, the hardware and technology money, and the software library and textbook money in this column. So together, those add up to $10,863,89. So that gives us a change in the foundation aid of $144,854 to the negative. So that is what we are down currently in foundation aid prior to the last meeting. So if you look at the rest of the numbers, you can compare them line to line. You can see they're very similar. High cost expense, excess cost aid, private excess cost aid is all coming in at what was given to us in January. I want to jump down to building aid. We've been talking all budget season about how I've been adjusting that number higher, actually, because the governor's numbers are not including the aid we're expecting from the current capital project. So I have increased what I anticipate us getting for building aid next year. A new figure for you here is the transportation aid. Remember that transportation aid is an expense-driven aid, which means whatever we expend this year in cost, we get a certain percentage back next year in aid. Currently, with school not being in session half of March, fall of April, the governor has said until the 29th, we're not coming back for sure. Our expenses in the transportation line will be going down as a total for the year. So I've taken that amount that we will not be expending to the bus company, and I've projected the amount, our aid ratio is 79%. So 79% of that expense will be about $183,000 we will not expect to see in aid next year. So the state budget numbers have not taken any of that into account. So we have to make sure we do our due diligence and do it ourselves. So that is where that negative 183 adjustment comes from in the adjustment category. So the negative 183 plus the negative 144,000 in foundation aid give us that $345,000 decrease. So if you look on the expenditure totals from a couple of weeks ago, I do have a small amount of change. I've been tweaking a little bit in the salaries and the benefits category, but overall, the expenditures at this point have not changed too much. So we've kept them relatively stable. We also, I want to point out in the aid category, we have two new lines on our state aid numbers, called a pandemic adjustment and a federal cares restoration. Currently, they offset each other. One is a negative, one is a positive for the same amount. We are not sure if that's going to stay the same. The governor has been given the power to make adjustments to the budget three times: the end of this month, the end of June, and the end of December. So we, every school district across New York, could see a change in the amount that is listed on that pandemic adjustment. So we do have to be cautious in our budgeting, expect a decline. Have the admin team will be working to prioritize a list of things that we may need to adjust as we go through the 2021 school year. But the first task in front of the admin team starting this week is to be reviewing what can we possibly do without for next year. Now, we're not thinking anything major. You know, we're going to, we're going to put our heads together. We're going to work together as a team, and we will certainly come to the board with what adjustments we are recommending. And Superintendent Carter will keep you up to date with that. As President Waters said, you do not have to approve the budget now until our meeting in May. So we have a month to go. So you'll be getting several updates as to what we're working on. And you can certainly also, you know, give me any feedback that you're thinking, and we'll do it together as a team. So I hope to have an update for you next week as to what the admin team has been working on, and we will go from there. Does anyone have any questions for me at this point?
Mrs. Oliveri, maybe a clarification. Just so I am fully understanding the, because our transportation is expense-based aid, and we will lose a significant amount of money that, while we will save it, of course, in our costs this year, but our costs will not be saved next year, assuming we realize a full 180-day schedule. As typical, we will not be able to receive all of our expenses, will not be debatable until the following year. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
That is correct, President Waters.
Thank you. For the public and board members alike, because the screen was quite small, at least on the screen that I was looking at, as far as the information that Mrs. Oliveri went over, all of that information will be posted on the website, I would assume, by tomorrow. So you'll be able to access those PowerPoints and look at those numbers a little bit more in depth. Hearing no questions or comments, I will move on to the personnel appointments. 3A, point Susan Anderson as interim internal claims auditor effective March 30, 2020 at 16:50 per hour if work is completed outside her regular school day hours. I will ask for a motion.
Trustee Chipola so moved.
Second.
Trustee Stewart, second.
Thank you. Roll call, board members. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Trustee Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart. Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all in favor, none opposed. Under 4A, other adopt resolution to provide childcare services for governors. Executive orders resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes and exinutes the superintendent of schools to arrange for the district to provide childcare services to all essential personnel in accordance with the governor and or Cuomo's executive orders 22.4, excuse me, 202.4, 202.11, and any related directives. Superintendent has authority to arrange for personnel services and facilities to provide this important childcare service to essential personnel as they work to treat and care for persons dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. Can I have a motion? Motion made by Carlin. Can I have a second?
Trustee Crop will second.
Thank you. Board members, roll call. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley.
Yes.
Trustee Crop.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all in favor, none opposed. Item B, motion to extend jewel agreement between the Wilson Central School District and a specific probationary teacher for an additional year resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Teachers hereby appointed to an additional year of probation in the tenure area of special education, said year beginning on September 1, 2020, and terminating at the end of the day on August 31, 2021 in accordance with the agreement with the president of the board, is hereby authorized and directed to sign on behalf of the board. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Boobar so moved.
Thank you. Second.
Trustee Chipola, second.
Vice President Chipola, second. Roll call, board members. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart. Waters, all in favor, none opposed, Mrs. Seefeld. Under 5A, policies adopt 1730 executive sessions, 3160 district standards and guidelines for webpage publishing, 3271 solicitation donations, 5140 administration of the budget, 5550 maintenance of the fiscal effort Title I programs, 5572 audit committee, 5681 school safety plans, 5751 drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, 6150 alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances staff, 6151 drug-free workplace, 6170 fingerprinting clearance of new hiders, new hires, 6540 defense and demarcation of board members and employees, 6553 military leaves of absence, 7110 comprehensive student attendance, 7314 student acceptable use policy, 7340 bus rules, 7410 extracurricular activities, 7512 student physicals, 7522 concussion management, 8210 safety conditions and preventative instruction, 8240 instruction in certain subjects, 85, 8450, excuse me, home tutoring, 8470 home instruction. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Stewart.
Trustee Hurley, second.
Thank you. Roll call, board members. Trustee Boobar. Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley.
Yes.
Trustee Crop.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Waters, yes. All in favor, Mrs. Seefeld, none opposed. Item 6, Committee on Special Education, Preschool Special Education Recommendations. A, approved CPSC/CE meeting minutes and IEP recommendations dated April 7, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Trustee Crop will make the motion.
Thank you. Second.
Trustee Chipola, second.
Thank you. Board members, roll call. Trustee Boobar.
Yes.
Trustee Carlin. Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley.
Yes.
Trustee Crop.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart. Waters, all in motion. I'm sorry. Mrs. Seefeld, all in favor, none opposed. Item 8, use of facility requests. A, can I have a motion?
Trustee Chipola, so moved.
Second.
Trustee Boobar, second.
Thank you. Roll call. Trustee Boobar.
Yes.
Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chipola.
Yes.
Trustee Hurley. Trustee Hurley. Trustee Crop. Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Waters, yes. Mrs. Seefeld, all in favor, none opposed. Mrs. Stewart, do you have anything for Nozba?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter, for your report.
Thank you, President Waters. Per Governor Cuomo's order, recently, all New York State schools will be closed until at least April 29, 2020. Therefore, Wilson Central School District will be closed until further notice. Also, until further notice, the Wilson Board of Education meetings will be telecasted via this video phone conference. All of these meetings will be linked, they're recorded, they're linked, and we on the district's webpage, also by governor's directive. All of these meetings have to be transcribed. So after the meeting, in the weeks, the week to follow, not only will the minutes go up on the board on the district website, but the transcript of this meeting will also go up on the district website. Many of our teachers have been supplying review work, both in packet format and on Google Classroom. We haven't created any kind of a process for returning the package yet, so please hold on to them. It's going to all depend on how long we're out of school. As for the Google Classroom, parents, I'm asking that you have a conversation with your children and maybe actually go on with your child to make sure they're actually can access or they cannot access Google Classroom. And if they cannot access it, your child should know how to contact the tech department. Or if you look at the webpage under resources for COVID-19, you'll see how they can get ahold of the tech department. They will help them get connected. Every child should be able to connect through Google Classroom. As of right now, there are some students that do have access, and we know they have access, they're just choosing not to go on to this work. And it is our responsibility to provide that work and make sure that they're getting it. So parents, we ask that you go on that, make sure that they can. If you're having problems and can't get ahold of the tech department, again, use that district number 751-9399. Leave a message, somebody will get back to you as soon as possible. As for a phone call I sent home a couple of days ago, all playground and our stadium and our fields are closed, public use because of congregation. If you're on it, you will be asked to get off the fields. You know, if you're using the grounds and you're using acceptable social distancing requirements, walking through the grounds or at a safe distance apart, no one's going to ask you to leave. But the playground area and the stadium area, there's no way for us to make sure that you're not congregating within the bounds of social distancing. So we did close those. Walking path is open. Parents, we did cancel all field trips out of district, especially those ones that are out of state. We had a couple in May, a couple in April. All of those field trips at this point have been canceled or postponed. You should have received a letter from the trip originator or the field trip coordinator. If you haven't by now, you will soon. Some of the trips have been postponed. In fact, most have been postponed until beginning of next year. One or two of them, we did have to cancel. Includes all sport field trips out of the district. They're canceled as of right now. That may change depending on when we return back to school. That may change depending on when we return back to school. Couple things that I want to mention. Couple questions that you may have. How long will we continue to run our grab and go food service program? As of right now, we will continue the food service program until, A, we're directed to do elsewhere, else, otherwise, or we return back to school. This includes spring breaks. Over spring break, we will continue to feed students. So on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and the three locations that are on the district website will continue to provide meals. There was a question asked about continuity of learning. Were we gonna do additional packets? There've been many phone calls home by the building principals, the elementary school. Teachers came in, created more packets. Monday, Tuesday of this week, parents picked up those packets. Most of the parents picked up those packets, a good portion of the school. And then the middle school last week, teachers came in, created more packets. And those packets were picked up on Monday and Tuesday. And about a fourth of our parents signed up for packets. High school last week, when our teachers came in and created them, those packets are gonna be mailed home. We were about 75 packets going home. If you didn't receive your packet, you can't connect on Google Classroom. So there's two ways to continue continuity of learning. Receiving the packet or going on your Google Classroom account, staying in touch with your teacher. The teachers have been checking it, they'll be going on. They know who's going on and who's not. So if you meet one of those two requirements, everything should be going fine. Parents, if you haven't received the packet, you know your child's not on Google Classroom. Again, call that 751939399 number. I don't want to give the wrong number like I did last night on the phone call home. So if you have questions, please call that number. We will get you packets. Will continuity of learning continue through April recess? The answer to that is yes. We are on 180-day schedule. Therefore, if the governor says we're out, we're gonna continue learning. We continue moving forward with packets. Teachers will stay in touch with you throughout that recess. We will continue moving forward. All things should be, all systems should be go, not only with continuity of learning, but also food service and providing daycare for necessary personnel. Those three things will continue until we return back to school, including April break. If you, what happens if my child hears a question that was asked? What do I do if my child's having trouble with their work, their assignments? The first thing they should do is make connection with your teacher. All of our teachers have email, they're answering that email throughout the day. They should make contact through their teacher. If they're having trouble connecting to the district Google Classroom, they should make contact with the technology department. I've been asked this about 700 times. When are we gonna return? If I had that, I'd probably have a crystal ball. I can't make that prediction. I don't even want to make that prediction. All I know is as of right now, we're out of school until April 29. I would expect an update as we get closer to that date. How long we're gonna be out? I can't answer that question. There's been a ton of questions. You should be having questions about what happens. This continues to the end of the year. Graduation. Child's a senior. What are we doing for scheduling? What are we doing for all those things related to seniors, prom, graduation? Those are awesome questions. We have written them all down. We're working on them one step at a time. Most of those questions depend upon when we return to school. If we return to school in May, we will start generating the answers to those questions and figuring out, what are we doing with the third and fourth marking period? All those great questions you should be having. I'm just telling you, right now, what I'm worried about is making sure our kids are fed. I stay connected to you and I stay communicating with you, making sure we have daycare for our parents that are having to go to work because they're necessary or essential personnel, and making sure we're providing some semblance of. All those other questions are gonna be dependent on when we return or if we return this year. Well, those are all great questions. Don't stop asking them. Don't stop emailing me. Don't stop putting messages on that phone call home number. I'm just telling you, I'll have, when I have those answers, I'll be sure to tell you what they are. I was asked this yesterday, what about Regents exams? Got the answer about 12:31 o'clock. Where Regents yesterday met, canceled all Regents exams to the end of the year, which brought up a fiery of questions, a fury of questions. What happens with the Regents exams? Those are all great questions. Usually what happens is guidance then comes two or three days later. Fifteen minutes before this, this board meeting went on, there was a guidance document in my inbox from State Ed saying, it was about 22 pages long, all about what happens when students take the class or the course. What do we do with the exam? How do we ensure that they move forward? All of that stuff will be read in the next couple days, and we'll make sure we simplify it, get it out to members. More importantly, get it out to high school students and the parents that are taking these exams. So I'm just asking you. The information is coming at us at a fury pace. My inbox is dinging all day long, and so are the building principals. We're trying to get that information in. Get it in a way that the board members and parents, students can understand it, and then ask more questions, and then get it back to you as soon as possible. I know that you have a million questions. One of the things I love about educators and being in education is we're all planners. And now we're in the middle of a pandemic. This is not the time to be thinking about planning. It's the time about taking care of each other, taking care of ourselves, taking care of our families. We will get to all these questions, we'll get to all this information. Right now, we need to take care of ourselves, stay safe, and stay healthy. I believe that's the end of my questions. Again, you should have a million of them going on. These parents, staff members, anyone who's watching, if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask those questions. Email your counselor, your teacher, your building principal. Email myself, call that phone number. The leadership team of the district, surprise the district administrators, teachers, association presidents from teachers, non-instructural, and our cafeteria workers. All are meeting three days a week. Compile these questions, we come up with answers. That's how we come up with the full messages or the emails to the staff members, the board members, and the ones that call them to parent. So the more questions that you ask, the more answers we'll try and come up with. Again, a lot of those answers just depend on how long. I'm gonna end it there and reiterate the fact that the most important thing we do now is stay connected. Make sure we keep the kids fed as much as possible, as long as possible, and our families. Stay safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Just, just a few thoughts on, on our current times. Board members, I'm sure you had the opportunity to at least look at some of the information put out from the budget presentation and NOSBA's findings and, and the condensing of information that they put along with that. New York's education as a whole, our funding includes a $96 million increase over last year, which is in the size of the state budget. And the size of the education portion of that budget is essentially nothing. It's very flat. The governor has indicated, as, as mentioned by Mrs. Oliveri, a pandemic adjustment, adjustment to, as part of our foundation, as part of our aid package. It does total 1.1 billion across the state. We can see that offset only if the federal government restores it. Our lack of an increase, as far as the Wilson School District is, is not devastating on its own. It's the inclusion of certain cuts in aid that follow that certainly will be devastating. The current anticipated state budget deficit, excuse me, state deficit is over $15 billion. The budget will authorize assessments, as was mentioned by Mrs. Oliveri as well, three times up to and including April 1 to 30 of this year. What that means is that we could be losing some of the foundation, or the, the, excuse me, the, the aid that was promised to us by the state last year when we, when we took our budget to approval by the voters. So we could have a significant reduction in the aid that was promised. They, they still, we're still due a significant portion of money from the state, which is very, very unsettling. If you look at the, what the, the governor can base his reassessment on aid, it could be 99% of projected funds or 101% over funds of, or projections over what they thought that they would be. And I, I would ask, you know, how we got into a $15 billion deficit if, if those were really the rules all the time, which we know that they aren't. The money goes to the large portion of the state where the, the governor seizes votes from. I do, would like to, on a positive note, thank every, every district employee for what you're doing in your roles during this time. You're truly all remarkable. And it's, it's really, obviously, yes, I expected. I know most, I know the work that you do. And I see the work that you do, and I'm very thankful and the dedication that you show to the district and its residents. I'm, I'm very grateful of that. Board members, do you have anything to add for discussion this evening?
Board member Crop, Waters, not discussion, just a comment on what you just previously said. I had the opportunity to visit the food sites last week, and it was remarkable how well they were handling this and the proper protection they were wearing. And I, I heard a couple of comments that, well, they're getting paid to do this. Now, they're getting paid, but they're not being paid to risk getting this virus. This is a volunteer organization through the school that is doing this. My hat's off to them. I know myself, I'd be a little apprehensive right now, being I'm 70 years old and could be a candidate for the virus. But I, I, again, I just want to comment on what they're doing and the great job that they're doing for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Crop. Thank you for the, for the kind words. Board members, anybody else? Well, I haven't heard anything come across my screen. Hopefully, someone that's close to me will tell me if, if anybody's trying to speak up, but not hearing that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Carlin.
Trustee Buber, so moved.
So moved.
Trustee Carlin, first. Who is the second?
Buber.
Thank you, Trustee Buber. Roll call. Trustee Buber.
Yes.
Trustee Carlin.
Yes.
Vice President Chapola. Trustee Hurley.
Yes.
Trustee Crop.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Waters, yes. Thank you all for participating. Be safe and be well. Look forward to seeing you in person.